Planning Commission work session for Wednesday, February 24th. Guess we'll have real call again, Karen, if that necessary? If you were here and you're not now, raise your hand. All right, we'll call the meeting to order. The item of discussion today, the proposed downtown zoning code. And Karen, I think I'm gonna turn it over to you. I wanna, before you start Karen, I want a reminder for those that are on Zoom to get close to your microphone. It's a little bit hard to hear.
I wonder if it's because they sent up- Nothing.
All right, and I also want to mention that Jeff Farrell is on Zoom. Jeff wants to turn his camera on or not. He does can turn his, unmute yourself Jeff and say hello. Just wanna make sure everything's working for Jeff.
Jeff's gonna pick it up.
Well, while we're waiting for Jeff, I just wanna mention that I did hand out copies for everybody, a hard copy of the proposed downtown zoning code. I know sometimes it's easier to review in a hard copy versus on your screen. And, you know, we recognize this is a really in-depth code. And so there was a lot to review. So what we tried to do is break it down. We have four work sessions planned for the commission to make sure that you have enough time to review this carefully and get all your questions answered hopefully. What we've done is divided into different agendas for the next four weeks. Starting off, just kind of dividing it into chapters. So now, I do wanna, as a first item of business tonight, just open it up for any discussions or questions about the review process itself. And this really can be driven, these work sessions, by the needs of the commission. So if there's things that you wanna spend more time on or less time on, you don't have any questions about some things, we can move on to the next topic. So we've just kind of laid out these kind of agendas so that you don't have to study up for the entire thing for every meeting. Hopefully then for each work session, you just have a little homework to do for that particular work session. And then at the end of every work session, we can kind of touch base and decide, you know, if we're still on track to the next agenda, if we need to spend more time on a particular topic. So I just wanna open it up for any comments regarding this process.
Karen, overall process for, you know, getting this fully implemented within the group as well?
The overall, the length of it?
Yeah.
Or just talk a little bit about the process itself?
Well, just a timeframe, how long do we think this process is expected to take?
So we, you know, with the public review draft, we're gonna have that open and available for about a month. While you're doing the work sessions, it also is available for people to comment to planning, the planning department, if they have questions. We've kind of tried to put the word out there, that the code's out there with Main Street and developers in the area and stakeholders that were involved in the downtown vision plan. So hopefully people have an opportunity, if they do have questions, comments on that, if they can contact the planning department during this month-long period. And also, this is a period for you to get a good understanding of the code. So after that period, we would have you set a public hearing, probably, you know, to allow those four times, you would be setting a public hearing on March 10th for the March 24th meeting would be the first hearing. And then we've allotted time for three hearings, three hearing dates that the Planning and Zoning Commission, if you need them. That provides, you know, enough time for the public and, but of course, you can adjust that based on the comments, and that's really up to the commission to decide. Then, once you're ready to make a recommendation to council, we move it on to council. Council, on something like this, we do a presentation of the community as a whole, based on your recommended draft and any changes that came out of your process here. The consultant team will try to present that to the council at a committee of the whole meeting. Council would also have an opportunity to do some work sessions if they need to, if they desire to. And then they will also then set public hearings and hold public hearings. And of course, any ordinance change takes three votes of the city council. So we're interested in this process, we'll probably stretch into mid to late summer before it's finally adopted.
That's an important change, so it's still important for the community to have time to weigh in sufficiently though. Any general questions from the commission before getting into detail? Karen, what? So as a member of the public, what's really key with this thing? You know, what's the impact on, for the general, like, you know, of this change?
What we're trying to do is create a code that implements a lot of the things we talked about during the vision process. That's the main function of this whole project that we're doing, for touching base with the community. And we've got a nice vision plan in place. And so this is really to help facilitate development that will be in concert with that vision. The other thing we're trying to do is, you know, update our code. We have some outdated zoning districts, some pretty old zoning districts that cover this area. And just a reminder, this is not only downtown, the core of downtown what people think of, but it also includes the surrounding neighborhoods. And all those areas that currently are zoned, you know, C1, C2, R3, R4, that surround the central business district. So some of those higher density and odd commercial zones that are mixed in there in this area. So simplifying the code, making it consistent with the vision. And also looking at the process itself and how things are approved. I know there's a lot of things right now that come through the Planning and Zoning Commission, the city council, including every, a lot of signs and that sort of thing. And I know there's been some frustration, do we really need to review every little site plan through the commission and the council? So I think the idea here is, you'll notice that there's a lot more standards in this particular code than what maybe we have now. But they're trying to make the code so it's more clear and objective standard. So as long as somebody's moving those standards, those would be a little easier to review as an administrative process. And so it could just go through a staff review process. As long as it meets all those standards, it would be that approved. So it'd be a little quicker process for the developer. But also from the public side, there'd be some knowledge that it is needed, the city says as well. I would say those are some highlights.
Okay. Can you remind everyone when the last time we did this was?
Well, the code, I think, was originally written in the 1970s. So there's still remnants of this code that are from the 70s. And then there's been layers and patchwork of different, and then over time. So it's time to update them.
Maybe a couple people weren't born at that time, if that makes sense.
So Jeff, can you hear us? Okay, Jeff, you can unmute, you need to unmute if we're gonna be able to hear you. He's got his microphone on Zoom, he's muted. On Zoom, he's muted. I don't know if that's gonna work.
Hello.
Hi Jeff, okay, can you hear us okay Jeff?
Uh, yes, yes, yeah, you're good. It was, the people at the podium in the last meeting were, were really tiny with low voices.
So Jeff, we're ready to launch into maybe a discussion about the regulating plan and some of the standards in the code about the regulating plan. And I know you said you were gonna have some of these elements from the code. You can go ahead and share your screen if we wanna discuss this in general about the regulating plan.
Yes. All right, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe, there we go.
I thought I'd just get something keyed up. All right. Are we officially underway?
Yes, we can see.
Okay, sorry, hello everyone, sorry about my delay. I was watching your other meeting and then I got distracted. First thing to know about the regulating plan, I'll be, I'll try and err on the side of being too brief. I know, I think you all have heard presentations from me not very long ago. Regulating plan, it's like a new kind of zoning map. It's very place-specific, organized by the frontages. So the rules for what you can do with your building vary with the kind of, call it the kind of street that your building is facing. Simply put, in the downtown, there's sort of some relationship between the, there's definite relationship. The color leads you to what the building form standards are. This is the parcade, that red stands for a storefront building type. The orange, I think of it as kind of the core of the downtown part of the downtown district. And then the melan color is a transition. And then the light blues are neighborhood standards. Residential buildings, single-family, two-unit and attached single-family and small apartment buildings. And that, there's a key on the regulating plan. So for instance, the urban general or the urban general two indicates that you go in the building form standards to, here's the urban general frontages. And there's statements of intent. Where's my next? Set of building configurations to give architects and designers ideas of different ways, different building forms they can use to meet the standards. And then the standards, pardon me, then the standards themselves. And I feel like I kind of went through that three easy pieces presentation with all of you once or twice in the last two weeks. But placement, how the building sits on the lot. There's a required building line because in an urban situation, all the buildings line up. And I know you just looked at some buildings on a, on a parcade and nearby and that's very much that same situation. Building heights, minimums, maximums. There's a key closer to the center of the parcade, buildings are taller, and there's some stepping down as they move out. And then uses, sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. The elements, windows and doors towards the street, balconies, et cetera. What the elements are. And then finally, the uses, which are dealt with generally in a less precise fashion, more general categories, so that there should be more flexibility under a form-based code with the use inside the building, but more precision about what happens on the public face of the building. And have to say, I would love to have someone start off on questions or get me involved and steer me towards where you'd like me to be more specific or not.
Bring it back to the commission for questions. We've seen the presentation, so thank you Jeff for the quick reminder.
So Jeff, I do have a question. This is Leanne Fall, and I have a question, when you brought up the uses. So we're generally looking at how our buildings look, where they sit, and all of that. What about uses, is there restrictions?
Yes, for instance, in the, in the, in the, call it in the light blues, there's some, there, we're really talking there about residential. And I have to say, with some exceptions, mildly, pretty small exceptions. In the, in the orange, the kind of general core of downtown, that's a very, in terms of use, that's a very flexible frontage. So theoretically, someone could build a residential building. In downtown, there's some specifications to make sure that, you know, the residential on the ground floor is reasonable. But someone could build an office building and the ground floor, they could choose to put retail on the ground floor or not. And that responds to the market in terms of its program. The parcade, the storefront would be an example of where it's actually pretty specific saying, on the ground floor, on Main Street, you need to have retail. And the thing I would definitely say that's almost more important than that is going to, is going to that page, it's kind of a one, almost a one-page reference to go look at the use page in that building frontage to check on what those uses are. In the form-based code, there's sometimes a difference in what's allowed on the ground floor versus upper stories, for example. So in this case-
I see that page 82, I see that now, thank you.
Well, also page 31 for kind of a quicker version of that.
And when Jeff speaks about retail, it's the broad category that includes eating and drinking establishments and, you know, general commercial-type uses. But a restriction on office in that really front space that's fronting the streets, making sure that those are kind of either above or behind. So the active uses are on, right on the street, just in the storefront area.
And thank you for clarifying that, yeah, I have a little, I'm not as, my understanding, I'm a little bit uncalibrated from how you all are used to speaking about use. So I just say retail.
Jeff, this is absolutely, I appreciate the document, it's really well done. Pretty clear. What, it's complex though, right, still? It tries to make something very complex simple. What, there are variations of this, I assume, around the country? What are those variations, what questions should we be asking to talk about those nuances? Are there any?
I would say, since they're done by a lot of different people, they're all over the map. Some, and, and I'm sort of, I'm sort of a, I guess I'm a form, a real form-based code geek. So I see big variations where you might see smaller variations. But some form-based codes are, I think, and if you look, I'm sure as you're flipping through this and you're looking at the architectural standards, you're thinking, this is pretty prescriptive. There are a lot of form-based codes, mostly that I would say are more prescriptive and actually less flexible. We try, we try and build in more discretion on the part of the architect. So we don't tell you exactly what your building has to look like. The idea is, we tell you, here are the rules that are building on, say, a storefront frontage or an urban general frontage. You have to do these eight or 10 things. And if you do those, you pass. We don't tell you that your building is exactly a certain way. So what happens behind the facade, there's more flexibility on. I think, and I would say, as long as I'm getting, I'm down in the weeds, a lot of form-based codes, it's changing now, but at least in the beginning, and there's still a lot of inertia that way, were written by architects who turned into urbanists. And they brought their desires as an architect with them. So I, so I'll stop there. There's definitely more, it's just different people do things in a little bit different way. We're trying to be, there's some notion about trying not to regulate too much, but let the variation happen. Of course, I absolutely understand how it probably looks a lot different when you're flipping through the pages.
Jeff, I have another question. How have other communities or received this, or developed this?
Yes, and generally, they've received it well. I mean, there have been instances when a form-based code's just been written just off, you know, out of calibration, when the person writing it wasn't paying any attention to all sorts of basic things. And I definitely think we've avoided that here because of our team and your staff who are, who are pretty tough. I'm not trying to curry favor by saying, but, but yeah, your staff is paid, you know, it's pretty tough and really worked with us on this. And we've been looking at economics, et cetera. There's, there's always, first of all, developers, it's kind of like a knee-jerk thing. And you can't blame them for it. Anytime a developer hears about, more about regulation coming, they're, they've been trained, it's like a Pavlovian response, they've been trained to say, oh no, don't leave us alone. But, but in truth, after, maybe because they've heard about form-based codes or there's some discussion, they often, they generally, at the end of the day or halfway through, receive it very well because they, they're, they're moving from a point where they don't really know what they can do. Because getting something built is a kind of negotiation. Because there's a mismatch between where people wanna go and what the rules say. Because the rules are old or incorrect and old, to make it worse. So I've heard from, working in places where there's been a good demand, and citizens have been very defensive about what they're getting, protective. Developers will say, just tell me what I can build. And that's kind of a bottom line for it. Architects go both ways, and I will say this, architects oftentimes see this as kind of an impingement on their creativity. And it's funny, that's generally not, when you talk to the architect, you'll have that discussion, generally not a big political issue. But, and some, and some codes are highly style-specific, we try and avoid that. But in, in general, we're working in places, a little bit like, a lot like Cedar Falls, where people are concerned about what they're getting. There's a market, and people are trying to build things, but their citizens are trying to keep them good. So, and I'm sorry if I'm starting to sound like this is an infomercial, but by kind of giving everybody a path forward. The reception has been good, and, you know, things have gotten built. We've had a number of really good successes. I think where there've been problems, it's where somebody just wasn't, somebody was coming in and they talked a good game, and they dropped a code off, and then, and then left, and people found that it didn't work. But this, this process wouldn't allow us to do that if, if we wanted to.
Other questions?
Has Jeff, maybe couldn't hear that, has form-based codes generally stimulated economic development in other cities?
I would say yes. But I'll give you a caveat to that, add a grain of salt to what I say on that. Because so often, where we're working, there's been a kind of a logjam of, or a traffic jam of regulations that don't work and political processes that are head-on. So we've had a few projects where we've kind of just, you know, pulled the logs out of the dam. And there was a pent-up demand that gushed out. So we've had some really successful projects. I think it, I think it, it can stimulate development by starting a critical mass going. It certainly helps when there's a backlog and you're suddenly letting this development happen. And I do think, and this is more subjective, that when that starts happening, it's like a little bit of a snowballing effect. People see things working, you know, downtown, if the first building on the corner of a block that's just a parking lot, surrounded by parking lots, once you get that one going, the next building that comes in close to it, you know, you start to get the nice place in between them. So the first good development can start the, what, there's some, trying to not mix an analogy between a snowball and sheep or something, a herding. But the one-word answer would be yes.
I think the other thing is that with the visioning process that we did, you know, we had the economist on the team that was kind of trying to make sure that the vision was consistent with the market in Cedar Falls, you know, what, where we are now. And so that same idea here was taken into the code that's written here. We tried to keep that in mind, the consultant team tried to keep that in mind for not just the downtown core, but the neighborhoods surrounding it. Really thinking about what kinds of things might be preventing development that we want in the community, and seeing if we can take some of the code requirements and make sure that they're calibrated in the right ways to achieve some new developments that the community says that we want. And then make sure that, you know, we're not, you know, it's not New York City or Chicago or something. So the idea was to code it, what's being calibrated to the market here in Cedar Falls.
And if I could add one quick thing, also the fact for a developer to understand that the city has the vision plan, that you've come up with this plan, agreed upon it, and then written your development regulations to fit it, how, forget about whether the regulations are really snazzy or what. The fact that you have this plan, the city's agreed that it wants to go somewhere, that's, that in and of itself is attractive. If somebody wants to build something, they'll, they'll look at that. And if it, if it pencils out, they'll go for it. So it's a little bit of a magnet, just the vision plan itself.
I have a question, I noticed that you're always hiding utilities. So have we talked to the utilities companies about this? Because in a lot of our neighborhoods, we have to put the boxes out in front of our houses. But I noticed in all of these things, we're hiding our utilities and, you know, disguising them.
There's, yes, sometimes it's something, it's pretty simple, like having a fence, putting it behind the fence. But I, I would, I was trying to say, I won't, if you don't, if the utilities don't, if you don't have to talk to the utilities more than once, I think I will, I'll buy the entire P&amp;Z dinner sometime. So yeah, there'll be that conversation and they'll- So yeah, there'll be that conversation, and they'll kind of say, well, we've always, I don't know why you want to do it that way. But yeah, just, my Nancy Reagan quote is, just say no. They'll, they'll, they can do it, they're just, don't, don't let them be sloppy. Apologies if anybody from a utility company is on the commission.
We have a very cooperative utility company.
Yeah, I mean, we're fortunate in Cedar Falls, we have CFU, and so we work pretty closely with them. I also have a comment on the parking, and that you hide the parking, which is really, I like that. Because, you know, just in looking at downtown and dead zones and all of that, it really helps that. And even in the urban and the neighborhood area.
Yes, and we, no, I was gonna say, we love cars, but on, on country roads, not as, not as a vista of parking lots.
So Jeff, process question. We're obviously really in this process. Are there things that we should be cautious of as a, as a commission, kind of moving forward? We're getting a lot of feedback and things that you've seen in other places that we should watch out for.
I'd, I'd say it's, it's, when people, well, yes. Oftentimes, people, and it's, and we've done pretty, we've done great in this process. Whenever we've shown you and talked about the code, we, we've been able to kind of present and walk you through it. And that's because if people are knowledgeable, even a little bit, about the, the way it's been done, they might pick up the code and see, open the page, whatever, random 54 or 27, and see something and not understand how it kind of fits in, and kind of go off with the misunderstanding. So it's, as you, as you hear people talking about it, or, or exploring it, it's just, everyone should make sure they understand it, how it fits together. And, you know, I have to say, I think it's simple, but it's different, which makes it a little less easy. Just make sure that people understand how some of these things are maybe defined differently, and it's a different way of thinking about things.
Would you say, Jeff, that you have to be careful about pulling out one thread and then the whole sweater falling apart, maybe?
That, that too. If you're thinking about, well, that number doesn't make sense, it should be something else. Just, I, people should be having conversations with one another, but trying to understand how it fits in the whole, because somebody may be misunderstanding that, that number. And maybe something like how building height is measured, or, you know, what the, what the setbacks versus the, the built-to's mean. Questions and conversa, leading to conversations are, I think, the key.
And I do want to mention that we are having some other work sessions also with community Main Street. And we've offered some work sessions for development community, particularly developers and architects that participated in the downtown vision plan and what is that, the building downtown buildings. So that, you know, everybody kind of understands generally, and has, has an opportunity to become in, you know, some questions about specifics about the code. Now, we know, I mean, we've, we've worked on this together, Jeff and Mary, very experienced, and Elizabeth, in trying to make sure it fits with Cedar Falls. We know that there may be little things in here that, that might need to be tweaked. And sometimes you might need to see how the code works for a while to even, you know, give it a chance in the community. And then, in that respect, if we identify something that doesn't quite work, we can always, you know, tweak things too. So it is a complicated code, and, and you know, that might need to happen. We feel pretty confident, we're pretty confident in Jeff and Mary's skills here, so.
But it, it, it's, it's absolutely normal that after a couple of years, or maybe five years, you'll, you'll see something that you want to just adjust some of the dials. That's, that's normal. I've never seen a form-based or any kind of an ordinance. So, so, you know, expect something like that.
Some evolve over 40 or 50 years.
Hopefully it would take that long before we need to change something. So I do have one question. I noticed that you do not, we're not allowing garage doors on storefronts, garage door windows. Can you explain that to me?
No, it's a, it's a judgment about, about quality. The, the function of having a storefront that can really open up, so that if I'm, I'm sitting kind of inside at a table, and the sidewalk's right here outside, that those two really interflow, there, there are much better ways to do that than a garage door. So that, you know, and there are windows, there are other ways to have that window wall fold away. The garage door is just kind of the, it's a quality, it's a quality issue.
Well, I also noticed though, that on most storefronts, that those windows could be open, but they have to be one to three feet from the level. So that doesn't allow for walking in traffic. And, you know, I traveled, I've traveled to Europe, and they open the garage doors, and you walk in, and you shop, and you walk out. So we're not allowing that the way it works.
I think, I'm not sure, they,
One thing I would note is, it's just as in that storefront area. So, so one of the things that we've heard from community Main Street was a concern about the historic character of just that Main Street parcade, and a lot of those buildings are very historic. And I think we're trying to pay attention to what in the Main Street said about the architecture of those buildings, and making sure we're not having somebody take one of those beautiful storefront windows and replace it with a garage door. So we're trying to kind of protect the main street parcade area, and then, you know, have some of those new things potentially happen, and with new buildings that are sitting in other areas.
That was going to be my next question. How are we protecting that historical, that we, that we need to use? Great, thank you.
I have kind of a question about what triggers some of this stuff. When I, when I look through all of this, I, I see a CDI of new construction, and it's real simple. When we're talking about improvements in existing buildings, or maybe even minor improvements to an existing building, but maybe a change in use that's now allowed from one of these zones that, or districts that wasn't before. What, what triggers the review process? And then, my kind of follow-up question to that is, is there any kind of, you know, grandfathering in of the exterior of a building that say there's potential interior improvements being made? Does it, does it, or is kind of a tear-down or more improvements that would be necessary otherwise?
We're, I would say, and then, yeah, Karen's the best person to answer that. We were conversations really careful. There's specific triggers, and we don't want to, we don't want to stop a business, you know, have to tear down, tear down for somebody who wants to make a minor change in their business. We're really careful about avoiding that.
So we have work sessions kind of divided up into pieces. One of the last ones is the administrative procedures. And in that, we're talking about, there's going to be a trigger chart. So it'll talk about, you know, if you're, if you have an existing building and you're doing this, these are the only standards you have to meet if you're going to do this. And so we've tried to create, you know, to protect and, and make a reasonable judgment then on some of the non-conformities that maybe some of the buildings have, or retrofitting.
So if I'm getting ahead of myself a little bit, I guess that answers my question.
Does that speak to Leanne's question too, about the historic changes?
Yes, so I think you can, you know, if somebody's, for example, trying to take off a lot of like ornamentation on existing buildings, that's going to treasure, you know, a fuller view of, of what they're trying to do. If they're just trying to make minor changes, and it's all consistent with these existing parts of the building, it's going to be a little easier for someone to do that.
Any other question?
We'll have Elizabeth Darvin, who is the attorney on the team, and she's been drafting some of those administrative procedure sections. And then Mary Madden has also been pretty involved in those discussions. I think the team tried to kind of divide and conquer. I mean, Jeff really focused a lot on, you know, the, the form-based code. You can correct me if I'm wrong here, Jeff. I know you guys all work together as a team, but, but you worked really hard on the regulating plan, and really, really tried to look very specifically at each property to look at. If you zoom in on that regulating plan, you can see that there's, you know, there's some odd situations in some of these blocks. A lot of the blocks, I mean, are very fortunate, because we have blocks that have alleys in the middle, and, and, you know, things have been changed over time. Sometimes those alleys have disappeared. So some of these things on the regulating plan, the beauty of that versus just a standard zoning ordinance, if you really could calibrate and look at each street and see how, how those might be regulated a little bit different. What's there now? Where is that transition from downtown to the neighborhoods? How are we going to transition that carefully? And I know there's a lot of things, a lot of details in this code. I think Jeff mentioned this last time too, about neighborhood manners and how to get, and with new development, up against some of those lower-scale neighborhoods, how you develop that in a way that's sensitive to that transition. So maybe Jeff has something he wants to show you on the regulating plan here, to show you some of those differences.
Oh, well, the, the, the big one is that there's a, we did a natural scaling down, you know, thinking from, from Maine to Washington. Clay Street, and then Franklin Street is really completely, we're thinking of that as the heart of Overman Park. So that's, that does a step down too. The neighborhood manners, there are also specific lines in the code. For those places where you might get, like down on the south, the southeast, a, a new urban general building that really does have right behind it or right beside it an existing single-family house, or, or a bungalow or something. So there are protections to keep it from, I use the term lording it over, but that's something I guess I brought with me from my childhood. Looming over the side building, oftentimes, we've seen a lot of new development in cities where they're really not thinking about the neighbors. So you have this terrible mismatch. And whoever is in the house unfortunate enough to be right next to the new development, really gets a bad deal. But that said, when you're looking at the regulating plan, there are a few places where there's specifics that are slightly different. Like the idea that along Clay Street, the uses are very flexible, but we're really not encouraging retail. Actually, we're saying no retail, aside from existings. Things like that. The, the very northern ends of State and Bluff, where they're close to the downtown, where the blue neighborhood medium is close to that urban general, we're actually saying those, if those redevelop, they can have a little bit extra height. So they're more like the downtown. And then after, at its particular point, that steps down. So the buildings are, are the, kind of the standard code height for the neighborhood. Apologies. The neighborhood medium, which is three stories.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Any other questions?
So I had, I noticed that there's exceptions, or there's, there's always an exception for civic buildings. Can you talk to me about that?
Yes, and we are, you'll note in the definitions, we're, we're careful about what's a civic building. It really means the kind of ceremonial building, city hall, the library, churches. And the idea is, those are exceptional buildings and have been throughout history. They're different. They don't have the same set of rules. It's like, I don't know, it's not a great analogy, but like buttons on a shirt, only really nice buttons. And those, those kind of punctuate the city and are oftentimes in important places. And those, those get, they're not, the tightly-defined civic buildings are not subject to the same rules. They're supposed to be different. And those are, those are designated specifically on the plan here with the black colors.
So then the question is, is there room to build a new civic building?
Yes, I think, I think, and I assume you're talking about in a completely new location, not just rebuilding an existing one? Yes, although I think that, that would be, and I think literally, it would be a big deal. So you would, I think you would, if you were going to say plop, pardon my use of the term plop, carefully cite, and you'd have discussions about it, it would be a big public process. If you were going to put a public building, say, on Fourth and Washington, I think you would, as part of that process, you would make that designation, and and wherever you put it, yeah, you would, you would designate it. I don't know. And I apologize, I can't remember off the top of my head, I'm not sure what the process would be to, to designate it as a civic building. I don't know, but that'd be like doing a rezoning, Karen, or?
Yeah, I would, I would think with the way, way it's written, that we would have, you know, we would put it on this regulating plan then. And I'm assuming Jeff's right, that a new civic building like that would probably be a big, big deal in the community anyway, so we'd probably want to do that.
So this characteristic map works similarly to the way our RUS map does in the rest of the community, where, where it's good, you could change it, you could extend one district over to the end of the next block or whatever, because of a proposal or something making sense. You have that flexibility to adjust your borders in the same way that we do on the RUS map in the rest of the city.
So this isn't a comprehensive plan map, if that's what you're referring to, the land use map that we were talking about? This is the actual zoning map. So this is legislative. So any change to this map would be a change to the zoning, just like you did with rezones. So it would be a zoning process. And I think there's a section in the very beginning about, you know, for example, up in that northwest corner where, you know, where Hawkeye Box. I mean, you know, that's, that's a pretty big redevelopment site, but there's no streets that go up through there. So, you know, the, the code here has a process to establish the street, put that in, on the regulating plan, and that process would do through rezoning and afflating, just like you would do anywhere else in town. But it would then incorporate it into this zoning map, which is another different map. Is that a good way to characterize that, Jeff?
Yes, and it is more, it, it's not meant to be that flexible, because it's like, I don't want to call it a Swiss watch, but it is legislative, and it is all part of a master plan. So changing one part has to be done very carefully. With this, with the exception, there is a provision in the code. And this is, I'll get, I'll go ahead and just jump down into the weeds. If you happen to own a property that had a change from one frontage type to another, like right in the middle of your property frontage, you have, and maybe one side lets you go four stories, and the other side lets you go three stories, or something like that. You have the ability to scoot that line 30 feet in either direction. And that's intended just so that if there's an issue, say, one of them is, is allowing you to have retail and the other is not, to, to fit, because it may be that the, the logic of the, the building increments mean that that, that part of the building wants to be a little bit bigger than will fit. You can, you can tweak that line. be a little bit bigger than will fit, you can, you can tweak that line that, that little bit. Other than that, though, it's really a set, a set thing.
So, Jeff, maybe you could talk a little bit about, maybe you zoom in on one of those corners, maybe that'd be a little easier to understand where there's a transition, and you can see how these wrap the corners, with the idea that the same frontage type kind of wraps, wraps the corner.
So, that, that line can move thirty feet, and if it would need to move more than that, it would be the same process with rezoning? Is that right?
Yes. And, and generally, some, well, this is a, actually, it's, I don't want to say this is a rule, but generally, the, it's color theory is not, we're not trying to make a big thing about color theory, but the warm colors, the differences within them are smaller. The place where there's kind of the, the bigger jump is where you would go, this is the, the G2, which, and this location allows retail, this is the neighborhood small, that's a pretty big change. One allows retail, one is really the smaller scale of, of neighborhood buildings, so that's a real difference from one side to the other. Within the warms, it might be something like, on one side of the line, the building could be a story taller than the other, so it's a pretty easy change to make.
I have a few more questions than I've done. In the key, it shows a special condition. Are there any of those now that I'm not seeing in this map? Or what, would that be something, is that a tool that we could use to change something later within one of these districts without going through the rezoning process?
Karen, I missed the key word.
Yeah, I'm not, say that, restate your question there.
Well, in the key, there's a, there's a special condition.
Oh.
Oh, down to the bottom of the key, in the key?
Yeah, what, what is that for, how does that work, and are there any that we should be aware of that are part of this now, or is that sort of a tweaking tool for later?
I got, I've got one right here. This is the asterisk one, and, and this is reflected also in the building form standard. It talks about this, and this, this hashtag one, hashtag, sorry, asterisk one, is the condition where there's a, you have a corner lot that has a, the rear of the lot has the intersection of an alley and the street. Generally, the parking setback line is a distance either from the front back, or, or in some, from the back forward. In this case, it's thirty feet back from the front of the building. However, within a certain distance of the alley intersection, you're allowed to have parking in this area, provided it's within a building. So, in this area, the parking setback jumps out here. And the, that's a pragmatic decision to allow that, so that if you're, and maybe I should look at, yeah, look at this lot, which is sixty-six feet wide, this would be awfully hard to park if, if you were completely on all sides, back thirty feet from the street. So, here, you might have, you might have parking within the building, so you'd have a wall here, and actually, probably, you know, building program above it. So, this, this is a special, that's one of those special cases. There's also one for the neighborhoods.
I mean, we know the corner, us sometimes are, I mean, prime real estate, right? You've got two different frontages, so it's really valuable, but on the other hand, there's some challenges to it as well, and parking isn't one of those, and so, giving a little bit more flexibility on that corner lot, as long as it's within the building, within an architectural building hall, is designed to meet the form standard, so you can see, you know, like a standard storefront building that faces like Main Street, for example, and you've got your nice storefronts in the front, maybe you're coming in the alley and driving in the back of the building, basically, the parking's in on the inside, and then the upper floors are above, so you type things with them. From everybody's perspective, it's, it's all enclosed, and you don't see the parking, so that's what some of those exceptions are for. And so, they are, to Kyle's question, they are regulatory, and they're part of it, they're not, it's just noting those particular things on the regulating plan here.
Yeah, these blobs are supposed to be cars.
And are there many others, or is that something we should be looking closely at? Where these kind of exceptions, the special conditions areas are? Or is that more something that's just being done to make sure that we're, that, that what we're implementing is over top of it?
Currently, there are only, I'd be embarrassed if I was missing the third, but currently there are only two, and they're both, they're, the second one is a variation on the first. This is the, the neighborhood small, and in this situation, back here, this might literally be the garage on the corner behind the house. In the downtown, it's probably the, that piece of the ground story with the second and third floor above it. Here, it, it might be just a, just a parking inside a garage, but it's kind of the same thing, you have this special area here, so that's, that's the second one. It may be, for instance, when we're working on College Hill's regulating plan, there may be a, a different one, it's just part of the mechanism of the regulating plan, where it can handle some kind of situation or site-specific issue.
My last question was just about the boundary lines between the districts. When would be the time to respect that, as I was thinking?
No, I think we can bring it up and...
It's, it makes a lot of sense, and I think that's one of the most challenging, challenging parts of this, over the form-based component, that's a little bit easier to digest, because you can, you know, you look at it, and it's, and you can make sense of it, whereas it becomes a little bit of a football ball question, where you draw these lines down, that's why I think it's kind of a little bit. The only area in particular, I keep scratching my head about, is Franklin, from, I guess, Second Street down to maybe Third or Fourth Street, there are already quite a few businesses and researches, houses, little storefronts and homes, and whole homes or whatever along there now, and I just don't understand why you step backwards into protecting that or reverting it to, you know, to those, to those neighborhood districts. But that, that's, you know, like, hey, we could circle back about another time, but that, that kind of left me a little bit further.
Kyle, I think you're, I think you're suggesting west of Overman Park?
West of Overman Park, yeah.
So, what we tried to follow was the vision plan and the character areas that were kind of defined within the vision plan, and I know that there's been some frustration, maybe Jeff needs to know a little more, I guess, there, there have been, because this is in the central business district overlay, there's some property owners here that have residential buildings, or originally built as residential buildings, but because of the downtown zoning, they can't actually put residential on the first floor. And so, they struggle, saying, well, I have a residential building type here, why couldn't I have this little building be residential, and the downtown place doesn't allow it? So, I think, you know, you're right, Kyle, there, there are some little businesses in there, and those, of course, would be, and the use itself would be kind of grandfathered in with this, but it does keep in mind that it's a lot of different types of residential that we were talking about, those missing little tags too, that might be nice along the, the park street too, and, and so, I think it was trying to keep, like, where does the community think that transition happens? And certainly, it's up for discussion, but that's kind of follows what was talked about in the vision plan.
It might also be something to keep in mind when you're looking at the trigger chart, to see where, I mean, certainly, if the businesses are welcome to stay, everybody is grandfathered in and doesn't have to change, to see if the, the point at which their change might trigger them having a real problem. It's, at some point, if one of those businesses is really growing, at some point, they, they would need to move, but I think at some point, they'd also really want to move.
Well, there was, there's, there's a little office building there, and then there's a house that was kind of a antique shop, or something like that, and I guess where I struggled with it a little bit is that if somebody else were to move in there, and, you know, I'm getting ahead of myself with these figures, but if they were to maybe want to address that place in that little antique shop building, and then find out that all of a sudden it makes sense, commercial real estate dollars for this spot, and they want to make some improvements to do their little twist on their own little storefront in the house, and then all of a sudden, no, because it needs to be, you know, it needs to be residential, so it might, might, I was just kind of stretching a little bit down to maybe Third or Fourth Street, but the area immediately west of Overman Park, just running based on that. I don't know what the answer is, but I just think we should look a little bit more closely at least at that one block.
Sure.
Marty, I know it's sometimes hard to get time in from Zoomland, any questions? Do you? Okay, nothing from Zoomland. All right, if there's no other discussion, then we entertain a motion for adjournment.
Before we go there, is there anything in particular that you'd like, and we put together some agendas for the next few work sessions, and I can email this to you, that you decide to be able to open things up, but if you want, if you have particular topics that you really don't focus on, I just want to make sure we cover all the questions that we have to, just let me know.
I think having those agendas would help.
Okay. Yeah, I'll send them all out, and then we can adjust them as time goes on if you need to.
Okay, great.
I can tell you one thing that's going to come up, and that's parking.
What? Yeah?
Not in the first meeting.
No, we'll, we'll save it for last, right?
All right, thank you, Karen, and Jeff, for all your work, really, there's some complex work there, and I think you guys have done a really nice job pulling together and setting up the process for community, so thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Motion at second. All those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Good to see you in person.